Thank you so much. Good evening, everybody. And we're going to begin our meeting tonight with pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We start with public comment. I haven't received any notes that we had a public comment. Is there any public comment tonight? No? Okay, that's good. I'm Kathleen Castren Ellis. I'm filling in for our chairman, Dan McDonald, who is away on vacation. And next to me is Jason Maves. Down there is Mark Parento, and all the way down is Ed Watson. We are gonna run this meeting. So, first up will be appointments of the board. We have one change on the agenda, under discussion and possible vote, item eight. I'll ask for a tabling of that, please, from my board members. And on item six, I will be recusing, so I'll ask Jason to handle that item, please. Thank you. Okay, so moving right along, we have an appointment of Richard York from Seven Abbott Circle to the Conservation Commission, effective July 1st, 2023. I see Richie's here. Hello. Good evening. Would you like to say anything about yourself?
Do you want me to step up there?
Sure. We're gonna vote for you anyway, but go for it.
Richard York, Seven Abbott Circle. I took this opportunity to join the Conservation Commission since I have a mill pond in my backyard and a great opportunity to help serve the town of Groveland besides being on the fire department and, you know, try to make positive changes in how we protect, you know, all our wetlands.
Thank you.
I'd like a motion to approve to appoint Richard York, Seven Abbott Circle, to the Conservation Commission, effective July 1st, 2023.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? We thank you for volunteering. All in favor? Second is to appoint Maximus Carducci. Did I say that correctly? Or did I butcher it? Is Max here? Did I have this wrong? Nope? Okay. As a seasonal groundskeeper for the Highway Department, this is a part-time, non-exempt, non-benefit eligible position, 16 to 19 hours per week, Monday through Thursday, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon through November 2023. The rate of pay is $17 per hour, and the appointment is effective June 20th, 2023.
I'll make a motion to appoint Maximus Carducci of Salem Street, Groveland, as seasonal groundskeeper for the Highway Department, part-time, 16 to 19 hours per week, at a pay rate of $17 an hour, effective June 20th, 2023.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor? Moving on to discussion and possible votes. We had a brief discussion in our last meeting about moving our meetings to Wednesday nights just for the summer period until Labor Day. Did we want to vote to do that? If we did do that, the town administrator pointed out that it would be problematic for signing the warrants, so we would need to possibly give authority to the town administrator to sign the warrants on Mondays. It's a little more complicated than just moving the day. Doable, but complicated.
Yeah, everything's doable. I know that Rebecca also leaves early on Wednesdays to go to her son's baseball game. And then on Wednesdays is the normal meeting time for the planning board, so there's a lot of rearranging. I think you'd probably be better off if you're just stuck to being on Monday.
Stick to the Mondays, and then I think Chair-- yes, Ed had a point about July.
Yeah, I'd like to keep it on Monday nights. I don't see any reason for moving it. The town offices are open on Monday nights. The selectmen have met for years on Mondays, and I don't see for two months why the need to change it. My recommendation would be to stay for Monday night.
Very well. How about-- I thought it was your suggestion, though, for the July 3rd meeting that you did want to move it to a Wednesday night. Do you still have that suggestion? Because if we were going to do it, we would have to do it tonight. Otherwise, leave it on July 3rd.
Yes, that would-- That should-- it would have to stay on a Wednesday night, but that's only one out of two months.
Why would that have to-- we'd run into the same problem with the town administrator and the warrants, though, so that's my question. What do we want to do about July 3rd? We need to act on that tonight. Do you want to save it to the end of the meeting, go through all the appointments?
Probably should, right? See, just talk about that after I get everything else done.
After we address--
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we, on-- The request for the meetings, change the meetings to Wednesday night, I'll make a motion that we keep it at Monday night.
Right. We don't need to vote because we're already on Monday nights. I'm just asking, do we wish to discuss at the end of the meeting this issue of July 3rd that you had brought up at our last meeting?
Yes, we-- We should move that to Wednesday night.
Yeah, we should discuss it because it's on our agenda at the end.
Right, so we'll go to the end then. Okay. So, moving on to item four, asking for the endorsement of the Council on Aging appointment for Alyssa Lee of George Street, Groveland, as the Council on Aging Director, effective July 5th, 2023. The position is 37.5 hours per week and annual salary of $74,589 per year.
Is she here?
Right, I thought we would first make the motion and then go to discussion.
Hopefully.
I'll make a motion to accept the endorsement of the Council on Aging appointment of Alyssa Lee of George Street, Groveland, as the Council on Aging Director, effective July 5th, 2023, for 37 and a half hours a week at a salary of $74,589.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Is she here?
Yes, I've heard Janet. Would you like to come up to our deluxe podium? Welcome.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you so much for the opportunity. I really look forward to working with all of you on the Board of Selectmen, certainly everyone in this room. Really appreciate it and looking forward for the many years to come, I hope, so thank you.
Thank you.
I'd also add, she's obviously very modest, but Alyssa's resume is very, very impressive. She has experience as people operations manager, executive director for Project Step in Boston, senior people operations associate in Cambridge, executive director of Creative Arts in Reading. A lot of experience, very, very talented individual, and we're lucky to have you. Thank you so much. And our motion is to endorse-- The vote of the Council on Aging. They are the hiring authorities, so we're just voting on endorsement. Ready to call? All in favor?
Yep.
Hundred percent unanimous endorsement. Okay, so moving on. Welcome. Okay, another endorsement of a Council on Aging appointment of Janet Del Mari. Did I say that correctly? I did it well, thank you. And Janet will be coming to us from West Newbury as a Council on Aging Outreach Coordinator, effective July 10th, 2023. The position is non-exempt, part-time, non-benefit eligible at 16 hours per week at $22 per hour. And if you want to make the motion to endorse--
I'll make a motion to endorse the Council on Aging's appointment of Janet Del Mar of O'Connor Court, West Newbury, as Council on Aging Outreach Coordinator, effective July 10th, 2023, for 16 hours a week and $22 an hour.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Janet, would you like to come up and say hello? Thank you for coming to our meeting, so it's nice--
Oh, you're welcome. You're welcome. You got it right. It's Janet Del Mari. And I live in Newbury. No, it was Newbury.
Oh, that's-- thank you for the pleasure.
I heard the west there a couple of times.
I did put a west in there. You caught me.
Right, and I came from the Council on Aging in Newbury.
Correct. I read your resume. It was impressive, very good experience. We're lucky to get you as well, and we welcome you into our town.
Thanks. I'm really excited.
Good. Any other discussion from the members? Okay, we'll call for a vote. All in favor? All in favor?
Yep.
It's unanimous. Thank you so much. And item six, I-- my husband is a cemetery commissioner, so I'm going to recuse myself and allow Jason to--
All right, I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Charles-- The Rose, as cemetery superintendent, effective July 6, 2023.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? No? All in favor?
Yep.
And one recused. Okay.
And one absent.
And one absent. I forgot that on the other votes. I'll try to remember that. Item seven is to approve the salary reallocation in the town clerk budget. It was requested by our town clerk, Elizabeth Kunniff. We'll give information in our packet on that. And I assume it's been reviewed by our accountant and our town administrator, so--
Probably should hear Beth's reasoning.
Oh, would you-- Would you like to make a motion, and then we'll have discussion, and Beth can speak? Or do you want to hear first?
I think we should probably hear about it and talk about it first.
Okay. Would you like to come and speak with us about this? Thank you.
Elizabeth Kunniff, Town Clerk. I checked with town council, and because of the single line item on the omnibus, there is an allowance for me to reclassify the salaries. So, as long as I keep at the same total salary, it's approved by the town council. So, that is what I planned on. So, if you have questions?
I don't have any questions. I mean, I'm actually just opposed to it just because we just increased this town clerk's salary, and reducing it will make it harder to fill that position. It'll make it harder to fill that position whether it's elected or appointed should nobody else run for election.
The difference is $2,000, and my town-- my assistant is worth far more than she makes right now.
Well, I agree 100%.
Then that's my preference, is to be able to move the line items around so that she gets--
But unfortunately, I think that would make it much more difficult for the town moving forward.
Well, since you were paying the clerk at 63, and now you're moving to 82, and this would be 80, I think you--
Which puts you just below the mean of what a town clerk should be getting. So, that's where it becomes difficult. If you reduce it further, it's further below what the mean is.
Probably only if you put it out for appointment and not election. So, I guess if that's your plan, is to change it from an elected position and take the will of the voters away from the town of Groveland, then that would make it more difficult, maybe, to fill the position, but not as an elected position, I don't think.
How many people ran for her last term?
No one. The term before--
The last time that the election was held for that--
Five.
Five people ran?
Correct.
You-- So, as long as it's elected, I still think it's gonna be a much easier position to fill, 82 versus 80. But that's my opinion.
Noise. Just easy.
Is-- May I ask a question? Is this because you're changing it instead of the 52.3 or whatever? Is that what you're changing? How are you reducing it by $2,000?
I'm moving money from the town clerk's salary to the assistant clerk's salary, but the total omnibus budget does not change.
I did not think we had the authority to move line items--
Yes, we do. Because of the way you voted the omnibus, yes, we do. I checked with town council.
This is an interesting change. You want to give more money to your town?
My assistant, correct.
Your assistant clerk?
Yes.
Okay.
Who deserves it? Hands down.
But we don't have the town attorney's letter in our packet that I see. Correct?
I don't think so.
Right.
It was a simple--
Okay.
--answer to the question.
Because normally, we don't make line item transfers until after May 1st within the budget, and only then because there's a problem with the line running out.
Your line item budget was for $112,420.93. That was your line item budget in the omnibus. I am not making any changes to that.
I understand it's within the budget. I know, it's just-- It is unusual.
It's well deserved.
Interesting and unusual. What would be the-- what would you like? Go ahead, Ed.
Just a clarification. What did we approve for this year? What did the town meeting approve for this year?
The town meeting approved the $112,420.93.
No, I mean for the town clerk's salary.
So, they didn't. The town meeting approved the full total amount.
Oh, okay.
The Claire Gov breakdown on the budget was 82,724 for the town clerk and 21,027 for the assistant. So, I'm changing it from 82 to 83,71 for the clerk, and from 21,027 for the assistant to 23,400 for the assistant.
What was-- I have on my paperwork here, salary changed to 80,351?
Yeah, 80,351. Is that not what I said? Yeah, 80,351, correct.
Okay. Down from 82.
Correct.
724.
Right, and the assistants would go up from 21 to 23.
But we don't have that document.
And you don't have what?
We don't have a document on the assistant clerk in our packet.
What document are you looking for in your packet?
You said you want to change her salary.
Correct. It was in the letter.
In the letter, yes, okay. But we also don't have the letter from the town attorney. I guess my concern is that at the town meeting, I know our town moderator read the line items. He read the category.
He read the 112,420.93. That's what he read.
He asked people--
Take a look at the warrant. That's what he read.
I would like the opportunity to do that, because I know he asked if there was a hold on any of the departments. He always does that.
Correct, and there was no hold on the departments because it's-- we're still approving the total budget. We're not changing the total budget.
I understand that, but I just think this opens up a lot of potential changes, and I'm a little wary of doing that at the beginning of the fiscal year, myself personally, so--
So, if you're wary of that, then please explain to me how you can put-- Ask someone to apply for a position. They send you their resume, they apply for the position, they interview for the position, they're accepted for that position, and then you swap those positions with the current assistant treasurer, so that now the new person that you just interviewed and hired for the water department is now gonna be your assistant treasurer, and your assistant treasurer, without ever having submitted an application or interviewed for the position, is going to be the administrator for the water department.
I think you're actually-- I'm gonna stop you--
I don't see how you can accept one thing and not another.
You need to stay on the topic of your salary, please, in order not to discuss other employees' salaries or any other--
I didn't talk about their salaries. I just talked about-- You said it was uncommon to do something like I'm asking.
Excuse me. Not on our agenda tonight. We're gonna stick to the agenda item. I'm just telling you that my concern is that we have always respected the line items as if they were voted by town meeting, because that's what town meeting is given as a presentation. They're given a line item budget. The variance report from the accountant tracks the expenditures according to that line item budget. And when we need to make transfers at the end of the year, we use that line item budget as our reference point to determine if we need to move any money.
So, I'm asking you to use this as your line item budget for the year, which does not go over your total omnibus budget that you approved at town meeting.
I hear your request. I understand what you're saying. It's not a--
You also said that this would open the door to doing something unusual, which is why that opened the door to my asking you the question about swapping internal positions within the town hall. You opened the door. I made the comment.
I did not open the door to non-agenda items. I opened the door to the fact that we do review a line item budget. As you know, you go before the financial board--
Yes.
--with a line item budget. We present to the town meeting a line item budget. I guess I would prefer to get an actual letter from the town attorney explaining--
I will full review the email that I received back from him.
Yes, and I'd like to have some time to review that and just see where else it might apply before-- Because it's coming to us for approval. You're saying we have to approve this.
I'm not saying you have to approve it. I went to the town administrator and the town accountant and asked if we could do this, and they did not feel comfortable making that approval, so that's why it's here before the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, yeah. So, the town accountant and the town administrator--
Didn't feel that it was within their right to-- Because you are the appointed authority. You are the voting authority and the appointed authority for the town of Groveland, so therefore, they deferred to you.
Okay, well, my feeling would be to either table this or vote no at this point. But anyone else want to speak? Go ahead, Ed.
So, that I'm clear on this, you-- It looks to me that, like, you want to decrease your salary by 24,73 and add around the 2,400 to--
The exact same amount.
To the assistant and reduce the hours to boost their hourly pay.
There's no reduction in hours. The-- What the-- They approved-- I-- we ended up asking for 12 hours or 15. They ended up approving 15 hours, but we also talked about having the flexibility within the department to cover heavy times in the office. So, what the town administrator and the town accountant approved was that we could do 12 hours a week, or we could do a reduced number of hours a week, and then save and bank hours at the-- for when we needed them throughout the year. So, during the election season, we can use them. During dog registrations, we can use them. During town census, we can use them. So, that's what we will do. So, she will work 12 hours per week scheduled, and that will give us 156 hours to bank and to be able to use during times of heavier workloads. We are gonna end up having five elections for 2024 as opposed to four, because now we're gonna have a special debt exclusion, special election for Whittier, so that will end up adding another election to the year. So, it will be a very crazy, crazy year next year in the office.
I think it's pretty admirable that you're willing to take a 27-- 24,73-- 27--
23,73 is the difference.
2,473 reduction and give it to your assistant.
Thank you.
That's all we're looking for here.
That's all this is, is exactly. Thank you.
That's all we're looking for. I mean, how many other people come before us and want to decrease their salary?
Thank you.
Well, I agree it's admirable, but unfortunately, it undermines the entire payroll study that we had done to adjust everybody's salary to the appropriate values on the position.
I'm waiting for a motion from the board.
I'll make-- Go ahead. I think I just want to see a piece of paper from the town council to make sure that we're not doing anything illegal, and as long-- I mean, as far as that, then I'd-- Before, I just would like to see that, just to make sure. But I don't know if we have to have this done before the 1st of July.
We do.
I don't think it has to be done before the 1st of July.
Well, you couldn't change it after you've started the payroll for the 2024. That's why it's done ahead of time.
Do you feel that we can't do this transfer once the fiscal year begins? That's another statement.
You would think you would not be able to?
No, I don't--
Once you've said everything for the year?
I think we can definitely postpone this, because I certainly would like to hear from the accountant and the town administrator as to why-- Other than the salary study, why they would not be comfortable with this request. Because, I mean, obviously, you're asking for-- to reduce your salary. You're not asking for more money, so I would just like to understand a little better what the reluctance is.
If that's the case, then I'll make a motion to table it until we have a full board and the other information that Mark and yourself are requesting.
I just feel that-- I'll second that, because I just feel that would be the safest way.
It was a one-word, it was a one-line answer from town council that, yes, this is legal.
I would like to see that. Jason, was that a motion to table?
Yeah, there is a motion to table on a second, so I'm gonna cough of the vote on the motion to table. All in favor of tabling this? It's three opposed?
Opposed.
One, just three to one. It's table for now. Thank you for coming into our meeting. Appreciate that. Okay, so, we're moving on. We are not doing item eight, the Sunset Circle parking restriction.
I'll make a motion that we table the Sunset Circle parking restrictions as requested by Steve Baker, since he will not be able to attend.
Second.
Okay, this-- All in favor of tabling? It's unanimous, thank you. One absent. I keep forgetting that. Item nine was to talk about a waste management and recycling task group, but perhaps you want to wait till the full board?
I think that'd be wise.
What's your pleasure tonight? Because we have another meeting waiting on us.
Yep.
So, you want to make that motion?
Make a motion to table the creation of the Waste Management and Recycling Task Group.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor of tabling?
Yep.
Four and one absent. Next is-- Do we have minutes to approve? I didn't think so. I thought we were there in correspondence.
Just in correspondence.
In correspondence. So, you have minutes in correspondence that would be approved on our next meeting, so there are no minutes to approve at this meeting, and so we'll move on to the warrants, I believe.
I'll make a motion to pay-- To approve payroll warrant 23,51 in the amount of $187,743.18.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion? All in favor? Four in favor, one absent.
I'll make a motion-- I'll make a motion to approve bill warrant 2351 in the amount of $317,345.11, which breaks down to the town of $171,010.78. Water and sewer, $25,538.74. Payroll withholding, $28,651.25. Light bills, $59,935.23. Grants and revolving, $32,209.11.
Any discussion? There being none?
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion? None. Okay, all in favor?
Yep.
Four in favor, one absent. Town administrator's time, obviously our town administrator Rebecca Aldum is away on vacation right now. She did give us a memo in our packet that I think she wanted everybody to read. And we can move on to selectmen's time and reports if that's okay with the board? Good. Ed, do you have anything you want to bring to the attention?
Uh, no.
Mark?
Nope.
Jason?
Yeah, I just want to thank the water department for the speedy repair on the water main break on Main Street. Got the water up and running really quickly, so I appreciate that.
Great.
Didn't know we had that.
I didn't know we had a water main break. Okay, what day was that?
Two days ago.
Two days ago, okay. Today, Inga and I spent some time with Mary Ann, I believe, from Senator Tar's office, talking about the Chapter 70 issue and, and the funding for school budgets and how much of the burden is falling upon our town of Groveland. And she has committed to bringing it to the senator's attention. And we are committed to continuing to study it and work on it and try to find some, some ideas to bring forward in that area. Do we have any old or unfinished business? Old or unfinished? No? Okay. There will not be, nothing that's not anticipated that I'm aware of? Anything that anybody else has that's not anticipated?
Yes.
Okay.
Approval of the liquor license?
I believe we don't, Mike Dempsey's here. Okay, yes, he's giving the thumbs down. It's been withdrawn or canceled, so we don't need to do it. But thank you for that. I need all the reminders I can get.
We have somebody on, on Zoom. Do you want to weigh in?
Jack Dodge? Is that Jack?
This is Brian.
Brian?
Brian, I might be here for ZDA.
Oh, he may be waiting for planning.
I, I am actually. Is planning not begun yet?
Oh, they're coming. The big show's after ours. We're the preview.
Oh, wow, okay, well...
The pre-show.
I'll, I'll, I'll jump on. Should I stay on and just mute myself or?
You're fine. Don't worry.
Okay, I'll just hang up.
Okay. We have two minutes, and I also point out that we do have an email from Jack Dodge regarding dog park access. And I think his point was to take into consideration if you're a resident of the town and you have sons and daughters or grandchildren that visit that have a pet, what would be the requirement for them to take their pet to the dog park? I mean, something for future consideration, I suppose. I know. There's always another consideration, but, yes, Ed?
In, in reading the letter, it made a lot of sense.
It did.
They're, basically, if you charge somebody to use the dog park, then why don't you charge them to use the, the splash park, the skateboard park when they put that in, the pickleball court? It, it made a lot of sense. The, you, they do charge for the boat ramp, but I understand that goes back into the upkeep of the boat ramp. That makes sense, but I'm not sure you could, you, you charge people to use the dog park, but yet you don't charge them to use anything else down at the, at the fines. So it, it, it makes sense and I'm sure everybody read it.
I do, yes.
But I, I, I think we'd have to, we, we probably should reconsider our vote to charge people to use the dog park. When you go, you go on vacation, you, people use the dog park if, if, if they're on vacation, if they're on a summer vacation, they may use the dog park where they, where they're going. Same thing during the winter. They go, they go south somewhere or warmer climate, they don't get charged to, to use the dog park. And nobody's checking to see if, actually if the dogs are licensed properly. So I, 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 I think, I think we ought to have a reconsideration on charging people. It's, it just seems kind of unfair that you, you charge for the dog park, but yet nothing else down there gets, you'd get charged for.
Well, we do charge for the use of the softball and baseball fields. I guess the, it, it's a good point. I think you, you're making very good points. It's like, how do you decide how to maintain all these things if we don't have money going into our recreation revolving fund? Because that's where the money would go. And then I think the point of the email was, well, what if I just have someone visiting who brings their dog? Can they just go to the dog park and use it? Well, obviously we don't police it, so nothing would prevent that. But if you want, we can ask for it to be on the next agenda again for further discussion, if that's what the board would like. What do you think?
I believe, I believe we talked about it. Just, just like the boat ramp, the money, you know, put into the general fund to maintain it, I thought that was kind of the whole point of doing it for the dog park was...
It's going into the recreation fund, yes.
Stuff gets broken or something needs to be cleaned, so... I mean, I understand. I've read the letter and I, I understand where he's coming from, but, I mean, if we're gonna, we're not going to charge little kids to use the playgrounds, but we charged the baseball fee, you know, baseball leagues and everything else, so...
And we just charged somebody to use the pavilion.
We did, yes.
Certain thing's going to be charged for. And I, I think he definitely is being about, a little sarcastic about charging for the splash pad and things like that.
I mean, how many people come to Groveland just for the dog park on vacation here? I mean, you know what I mean?
Vacation is going to be a few. It's not that many.
I, I understand it, but, I mean, I think we're kind of...
Well, I think the problem is that if we don't have a revolving fund for the recreation areas, then the money to upkeep these would have to come out of the operating budget because you can't use the Community Preservation Act funds to maintain. You can only use it to build. So I think the pickle and tennis ball courts may, at some point, be subject to a fee or something, you know? Because again, that's something that would need to be maintained. And somebody needs to, to fund that, either the taxpayers or the people using it. One or two places. But if you want, we could bring it forward, or we can let it sit for now and keep going. It's up to the board. We don't have a full board tonight. I didn't anticipate that we would do anything more than acknowledge the correspondence.
Just table it and bring it up next, the next meeting?
Okay.
Get Dan's input, and maybe if Jack Dodge would like to come in, maybe we could do something, you know?
So you want to make a motion?
I'll make a ma, motion we table it till the next meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor of tabling?
Yep.
It's four, one absent. Okay, so we've done correspondence breakdown. I think we have reached the end of our meeting.
We just have to announce the next meeting?
That would be the thing. We do have to discuss the next meeting, if we're going to have it on July 3rd or not.
Which I believe is what we discussed at the last meeting, of moving it to the 5th, which is why we put it here on the agenda.
Right. So if we want to move it to the 5th, the only thing, can we give Rebecca one-time permission to do the warrants and approve the warrants? We can give her permission in the vote.
Yeah.
So people can get paid, yeah, and the bills can get paid.
Yeah, it's sort of important.
It is kind of, I kind of feel it's important, getting your paycheck. All right, so did you want to make a motion to move our next meeting to Wednesday, July 5th, and to give the town administrator permission to approve the payroll and bill warrants?
Make a motion, we post a meeting for Wednesday, July 5th at 6:30.
I'll second that. And, and give Rebecca the authority to sign the warrant?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, so could we say that? What is the, does it include the, are we doing this? So it would include the town administrator has permission to sign it for us on the payroll and bill warrants for that period of time? Okay. Any more discussion? There being none? All in favor? Okay. It's approved. Four yes, one absent. Our next meeting will be on Wednesday, July 5th at 6:30 PM.
And I'll make a motion to adjourn at 7:08 PM.
I'll second that.
All in favor? More in favor, one absent?